Uh huh.
Oh, cool.
Thank you.
How are you?
So made a big difference. Well, cool. Thanks.
Can you give me? Whenever. I'll, I'll. No problem. No problem. What do you?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, wow. That was.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank.
We had a.
Oh.
No, no, great. Good.
Sure.
Then. We. City.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, that's nice. Yeah. Yeah.
That was a part.
Yeah.
Oh, whoa, no way.
Falling apart.
In the neck of time.
Yeah.
Oh, my mother called it.
You're in trouble.
Could she call?
Didn't realize that was.
An option.
My mother called too. He's.
Apparently been late for supper or something.
Okay, Jody, can we get started?
We can get started.
Okay. So we have Nolan. Hello, Nolan. Okay, guys, we're gonna get started on. Um, a working session on this, a committee of the whole working session on the zoning code up. Update. This is number. Four. We are just going to spend an hour this evening, so we will be out of here by nine thirty. Um, the general agenda is. We have three remaining planning commission recommendations, nine thirteen and twenty six, so they're gonna tackle those first. Then we're gonna specifically discuss the setbacks and standards. In the pedestrian residential district. Uh, then if time, we will discuss any council member amendment changes that are out there, and then we'll revisit the zoning map. Um. Uh, if time permits, uh, quickly, I mean, we had a lot of. Comment during lobby visitation of our regular council meeting immediately preceding this on the pedestrian residential district specifically. You know, I, I am. Going to suggest that we continue working through the June draft that we have in front of us. Um, in this working session format as planned. Making, you know, the numerous and various changes that we've discussed to date, so that at the end, we have a clean. Um, final draft that we can add to council's formal agenda. But before we do that with a clean draft in hand, I really think it might make some sense to hold some sort of community forum where we go through. Just the pedestrian residential district in detail. Um, have some discussion. Um, create a, and a really great FAQ doc, um, compare the pedestrian residential districts. Um, standards and uses to other residential areas under the new. Proposed zoning code. Um, you know, there are non-residential uses in, in all of the residential zones and districts, and this is really. Complex stuff. Um, and there is a fair amount of misunderstanding out there. Uh, which I totally get because I have had a fair amount of misunderstanding on this stuff myself. Um, so I think that, um. You know, we have a duty to make sure that the community understands what we are proposing to do with the pedestrian residential district, and I want to make sure. Uh, that we get that done. So I'm just floating that suggestion. Right now, so it would be wrap up the working sessions, get a final. Adoption draft from Zone Co. Do a pedestrian residential forum in some format. Um, and then. Add it to. Our, um, agenda. I mean, the goal is, well, so any discussion on that right now, or?
I support the community.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I also supported, uh, with the understanding that it's a two-way communication. It would be a shame to. To not have that kind of dialogue. Because so many of the public hearings, et cetera, have been. We really haven't had the dialogue. It's been people talking to us, and. I think. Us all rolling up our sleeves and having that kind of an. Interchange would be good, and it's not. It's not just us conveying what this is about. But it's also the community conveying to us. What their, uh, concerns are, so. That's a long way of saying. I'm all for it if it, if the forum is two-way communication.
Yes, agreed.
Madam Chair, I, I think, um. I think we ought to, at some point, this council needs to make a statement on whether. Proposal to eliminate PR district is even on. Uh. I'm sensing, I haven't talked to anybody on this council about it, but I'm sensing that, that this council is largely. Uh, in favor of modifying the original proposal. We've been doing it for the last number of eight, made a lot of amendments. I can't recall anybody ever suggesting, council, that it. Eliminated and revert back to. But I think we owe it to the, to the folks who've been speaking to us for the last meeting. To. To state our position as a council as to whether we will consider that as an option, or are we just moving forward with a version? Of the PR district. Is the removal of. PR district an option? For this. And I'll start that discussion by saying, you know, moving for this committee, that I make a motion that. Remove the PR. From.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, there's, there's. I, I understand what Greg's saying, and I appreciate that he's saying it. Uh. I guess it goes back to what the community forum would be about. Uh. And the various other options. For example, someone tonight was saying, uh, keep PR. But just don't have it be in our area. So. Would voting for or against what Greg mo- motioned? What if the option of? Continuing with, uh, a PR in the zoning code. But not having it be. That area. So how would I vote on that? Uh. I myself don't, at this point, I mean. I don't wanna. I don't want to dump the gun in terms of, well, we're gonna have the community forum, we're gonna have interchange of ideas, there may be a, another alternative that comes up as a part of that. Uh, so I, I, I myself, I, I get what Greg's saying. But I would, I would rather that we go through the motion, but if, if. The, the decision tonight was to say. Am I open to not having a PR? Oh, my goodness, yes. And am I open to perhaps there being a PR but not in the area that is currently zoned, uh, proposed? Oh, my goodness, yes. Uh. That's, that's the way I'm leaning, but. I don't know if this is perhaps premature and. So that's my, that's my.
Again, I, I, I just, at some point in time, whether it's tonight or the future date, all I'm suggesting, this council owes the community statement as to whether that's. And if we wanna. Vote on, on the motion on the table and, or delay it till after this community forum, I, I. I certainly would, would welcome that if the, you know, it happened. But the revisit, to revisit the question.
Is your option, is your, is your motion, I apologize, I didn't write it down, is your motion? To convey that it is an option to eliminate PR?
My motion is to remove the PR district as it exists in this draft. From the discussion right now. That's the motion.
I'm, I'm certainly not supportive of that yet. I mean, we're really gonna get into the details of the setbacks and the dimensions this evening, it just seems super premature. Um, and again, I do, I mean, a lot of what, not a, uh, uh, we heard some misunderstandings this evening. It is simply not how that district. Is going to operate, what kind of residential is included? I mean, there's. So we, we need, we need to make sure we're, are, the community is clear on, on the goals of the district. Um, I, I do not think we have accomplished that yet. And so really a vote on getting, throwing it out altogether tonight seems super, super premature to me.
Madam President?
Yes. Well, I'm not, I'm not president.
Oh, so.
I, I.
Madam Chair.
You can just call me Rachel.
Rachel.
Yeah.
Um. I would say that I have some. Some pretty big. Worries about. The percentage of lot coverage that's currently in this and, and the setbacks, and I, I know that we're talking about that. Um. But I mean, I guess as it stands right now, I, I probably would vote against it, um, because I do think that there needs to be some, some pretty substantial changes, so I would. Preference. Unless there are substantial changes to the, the lot coverage. And the setbacks, because I, I think the, the worry, worrying thing here is that someone's going to. You know, tear down one of these beautiful old homes and, and build a. A duplex like we've seen, and. I understand where we're coming from. I, I understand the, the progress that we want to make here. I. I just unfortunately don't have a lot of. Faith in, in the development that I've seen in this city. So far, I mean, I, I don't. foresee a lot of developers coming in and building beautiful brownstones. On prospect is as much as we would want. So that, that worries me, and I, I think with the lot. Percent, the, the percentage of lot coverage, I mean, eighty percent is a lot. I mean, that, or sixty-five percent. No, it is eighty percent. Yeah, eighty percent is a lot.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's not leaving a lot of green space on the, on these lots, so, uh. I mean, that, that's where I'm at right now, but I. Uh, unless there's some, some pretty substantial changes to it, I, I do not support the PR district.
I would like to. Finish our discussion on the PR district. But I have to say that, as it currently stands, I don't support it either. So let's, I would like to see. Where we land. With our discussion. I would like to, I would fully support. Uh. Uh. Meeting with the community. About the residential districts and, uh, the pedestrian residential districts. And then. Once we have a finished document. And full feedback from the community. Make our decision based on that.
Okay. And, oh, sorry, Mark.
No, I just, I would concur. I, I think it's a little premature. The, the vote that we're about to take is whether to scrap the PR district altogether. I think it's premature for that. Um, because. What I'm hearing is that there are a lot of people that have some things they would like to see changed about it. Um. So I, I think until we have this public meeting and until we have the discussion tonight, where we're gonna discuss things that people have concerns with. To just. Chuck it right now, uh. It just seems a little early to me. So. I would be voting no on such a vote. But not because I'm in love with the PR district, just because I don't think that it's, it's had its due diligence yet.
Any other discussion? Greg, are you withdrawing your motion, or do you wanna? Okay. So let's, let's have Jody call the role.
Um. Before we call roll, can we clarify? So that we are currently voting on whether to. Chuck it, scrap the PR district. Before discussion.
Right. Would it be replaced with anything, or we're just voting, it's definitely not gonna be PR?
It, it already.
It already is. I mean, everything's zone some. Those, every house on this map is in a zone.
So would you be replacing it with R two?
Right. Look, look, I get it. We, this may not pass, it may pass. It's already having the intended effect that I wanted to, moving the discussion in a slight if.
Mm-hmm.
I do want to continue. But what's important to me is that if, if hypothetically, a, a majority of this council didn't like it, why modify? Let's just move forward. If the majority of this council thinks it's salvageable, great. But let's go on the record, let's do that, let's explain where we're headed. And, and move forward, but I wanted the option. That's what we got. I wanted the option of eliminating, if that's what the majority of the council wanted, so we're not spinning our wheels for the next year for me. Modifying a, a section that nobody wants.
Mm-hmm.
Bottom line position.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Rachel. I, I, it's gotta be Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh. Right now, I, if I, if I had to vote. Up or down on the PR, I would, I would very definitely vote down. Uh, I, I don't like it, I don't like it that it's here. Um. But I don't want to. Eliminate the possibility that we have. A PR zone. In our code. But not have it be. Where it's at.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it should be where it's at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if I vote no on this, I want to make sure that people understand. That. It's because I'm. Uh, conflicted as to whether to eliminate entirely.
Mm-hmm.
Or keep it, but not have it be part of this.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I support that. So I think we've done good work, I think. Uh. Makes sense for planning. Uh, there's certainly, as the city is expanding in, in areas. Uh, so I feel like. Continuing to. Flesh out. Pedestrian residential districts makes sense. But it's clear that the people that live in this community don't want that. Happen here. So. I would like to, I would like to finish the work on the pedestrian residential. And then side where.
Okay, let's do a roll call on Greg's motion to throw out the pedestrian residential district.
Dennis?
No.
Harold?
No.
Alaba?
No.
Odericio?
I'm voting on whether to, a, a no vote. Continues our work. Correct. No.
Pips?
No.
Robinette?
Yes.
Robando?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion fails. We're gonna do some work on the pedestrian residential district this evening. Let's start with, um, Planning Commission. Recommendation number nine. Which is to change Bar Tavern from a. Permitted use, um, to a conditional use in the commercial zone. Any discussion here?
The, uh, Planning Commission vote was a four to five vote on this.
Yes.
So they voted it down.
Hmm. Uh, I'm not sure.
I have that here somewhere.
Uh, no. Did you vote this down, Bob?
Yes, it was four, 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 five against.
Oh, so this is the only one that did not pass. I just did not pay attention to the vote. I thought this was a list of your recommendations. So you considered this, Bob? Okay. And that is the only one that was, that failed. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so. Is there a motion to consider this? Um, at this time, or should we move on? Thank you, Bob.
Well, if they said no, I'm fine with voting no.
It's. We should, I think we should move on. This did not.
Okay.
This was not recommended.
And then if a separate council member wants to bring this up at a later date, they can. Okay. All right, so then, uh, let's move on to. Um, Planning Commission Recommendation thirteen, which is. To remove the second sentence in one fifty point four three on page. Uh, forty-eight. Um, starts at the bottom of forty-seven. Uh, that. No outdoor entertainment may include the use of sound amplifying equipment such as speakers, amplifiers, and microphones. Discussion here.
That passed by a five-four vote.
It did. So the sentence that precedes the one that Planning Commission is recommending we remove is that outdoor entertainment is an accessory use of a commercial principal use. So where's, where there is a commercial, a principal commercial use anywhere in our city. Um. The original language prohibited. Sound amplification equipment such as speakers, amplifiers, and microphones. When there is outdoor entertainment.
That was for an accessory, correct?
Uh, it's anytime there's outdoor entertainment that is accessory to a commercial principal use. Citywide. Bob or Will, I know Will's here too. Does anyone? Wanna address? Us on this?
Right.
Will, you're gonna have to come to that microphone, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. Um, I think the rationale, subject to Bob's recollection as well, was twofold. Um, one was. Uh, it, you would be allowing small speakers but prohibiting, you know, loud saxophones is one, the way it's written. Um, and then two was the idea that this was the wrong place to be regulating noise. Um, we regulate noise elsewhere, uh, in our city code in the same way that it'd be odd. Um, in the, the PR district, which I urge you not to scrap. Um, if you were to regulate the, um, the speed in the PR district, um, I think it's a good idea to have speed limits in any part of the city, but probably you don't want to put it in the zoning code. The same principle here with the, uh, with the noise. That was the rationale, I, from my perspective that we voted on and.
Thanks, Will. Any discussion, any questions for Will?
Uh, we. I. Feel like we already have. Instances of this being an issue. In our zoning. But we, I mean, we have. Breweries that. It's an accessory use, sell their wares. And then it's an accessory use, have live entertainment. So. I mean. It is an accessory use in use right now. So I feel like it would be. Relevant. To regulate that. Regulate. What it can be used for.
Also, outer, outdoor entertainment. Just so we're clear, would still be a permitted. Accessory use of a commercial use, but.
It could not amplify.
Could not imply, yep, and you. And you're inclined. To support such a prohibition citywide.
If we leave it in there, we're gonna begin allowing amplification.
Uh, no, we, um, so we have, we have a, um, a nuisance noise ordinance.
Correct.
Which, um. Creates limits on nuisance noise. So that would be the vehicle whereby. You're enforcing, if, if the zoning code is silent, I mean, that just. The, the nuisance ordinance is enforced. Um. You know, I think something, so this, this has bugged me because it's. Um. A prohibition citywide, um. You know, if, if. We. You know, I, I think a middle position would be maybe keeping this, um. Prohibition in for the pedestrian residential district and. The university residential district, but again, I mean. I think the main enforcement mech- mechanism on a weekend of noise is going to be, um. You know, law enforcement and the noise. Nuisance ordinance, not, um, not our zoning code, so I'm not sure how much good it will do, noise travels, the pedestrian, I mean. But that is one position I saw, I don't know. The appetite for that is.
I think the argument that we are arbitrarily. Regulating the type is pretty persuasive. Set up a drum set outside and. I'm sorry. We are. Regulating this pretty arbitrarily by saying that only sound amplifying equipment is prohibitive.
Yeah.
Saxophone was the example used, drum set would be another. I'm making noise over a certain threshold, that seems like a more direct way to. Maintain a peaceful neighborhood.
I also think the Planning Commission Recommendation. Down. Rational. I'll support it.
Okay, any other discussion here? Okay. Um, Jody, you wanna call the role? I guess we're doing things differently this evening.
Harold?
Yes.
Alaba?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Pips?
Um. Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Robando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, so that recommendation is adopted. Um, let's move on to Planning Commission Recommendation twenty-six, which was generally on building heights. Kind of tabled this, or. But I just want to make sure we circled back. Does anyone have any thoughts on building heights? Heather shared with us a comparison document, um. Something we want to address right now?
Well, I, I have talked to. Number of developers. One of the things that concerns folks, clarity, it wanted, we want to make sure that this code.
Mm-hmm.
And one recommendation is to describe our height requirement, at least for, for. The district. Floors, rather. I guess I'm not. Or why. Are going to the, right. It's the opinion of a couple of developers. Simply identifying for a floor is a heck of a lot easier for anybody to pick it up and understand, football and green. Rather than trying to determine, well. How many floors can I squeeze into that range, or how, um? So, so more from a clarity, and, and again, not necessarily to change what our objective. But to describe. Secondarily to that, opening this up so that. Our underlying or overarching goal of making. Be more attractive for developers. Are we being too restrictive? Right. One, one. Option would be to eliminate them altogether, let the developer determine. That's appropriate. We've already done. Our gateway district has. In discussion, we think throughout the number of seven is being acceptable simply because the building immediately across it three fire station. At the university had. Seven. Uh, uh, my memory is generally that. That might, but, but the point is it was at least that high, and, and so that the seven-story building would, we, and we set up on seven. But in the end, we ended up being. No. So those two issues are still at the forefront, uh, of concern for people. Hope to help us develop our. Are, are the, uh, descriptions of height requirements clear and easy to understand? And are they reasonable? Do they need to be opened up a bit, make it, to make, yeah. Development more track. The develop.
Is it okay if we ask Nolan about your first question? Um, Nolan, talk to us about why communities do or don't use like a number of floors.
Yeah, yeah, so. You'll see, uh, some communities using a number of floors, some communities using feet, some communities. Confusingly use both feet and number of floors, um. I typically advise communities to go with a number of feet because a number of feet is actually clearer. Um, if what somebody's trying to control is the height of a building, a floor could be. Anywhere between nine feet and. Forty feet high, so if I say two floors, um, that could actually be a range of heights for the building, so I see. Feet as being a clearer determination. Um, and you can have, right, if you had a forty-two floor, or forty-two foot building, sorry. Um, that may be four floors, that may be three floors. But it's going to look probably the same from the outside because it's the same height. As another forty-two foot building.
Okay. Um. Greg, any reaction there, any?
Well, I guess, I'm just throwing out there, is there any other, if, if anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I definitely want to keep the height restrictions in place, especially in. I, I definitely want to keep the height restrictions in place, especially in the residential neighborhoods. I mean, when we're talking about what, whether it be PR or R two, I, I think one of the, the main issues that individuals who came up and spoke was saying that they wanted to maintain the integrity of the community. Um, I, I definitely don't want to, I don't think we should be opening up the opportunity to have a sixty foot apartment building in a has like pedestrian residential neighborhood. So, um, I, I think we should maintain the height restrictions as is so far.
Is it any?
Adam Chair, I, I support continuing to speak.
Okay.
It's very clear. They use whatever signs they want to fall within. That are there.
So any, any motion here on height restrictions right now, or I mean, we have?
I make a motion that we leave it at thirty five feet.
Which, I think, wait, wait, we're not on the setbacks of the PR. Just we're on the height restrictions.
In general.
No, Greg has made no specific motion. We're just talking in general terms right now.
Never mind. I have not.
Okay.
Make any.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, uh, I think that we should either A, uh, continue to express height restrictions in terms of feet or possibly if it will help, uh, feet and or floors, whichever is lower, uh, but, uh, I don't know if that really clears things up. I think it's feet.
Feet now, right?
So, yeah.
Yes.
Is, is this document accurate that thirty five feet is the current standard in R two? Okay, thank you.
That's why I said thirty five.
In R two.
Just a discussion point. I have no motion.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Okay, so then let's move on to, um, the specific setbacks and standards in the pedestrian residential district. Um, I handed out a comparison of the current R two in the proposed pedestrian residential district last meeting. Um, and Heather sent us, um, GIS information on the lot widths in the proposed district. So, um, why don't we, why don't we start there? I mean, I thought this was super striking. If there, there are maps in the back, um, audience members, if you're interested in looking at what the current lot widths in the pedestrian residential district are. They're right in the corner of Peter's desk right there. So, um, Heather, do you want to walk us through what you found or do you want me to? Some, why don't you? I'm not summarizing.
So what we did is, you know, working where we've worked every day and looking at zoning permits, um, we knew using existing lot of record that many parcels around the downtown are not sixty foot wide. But we didn't have any quantitative data for that. So what we did is our GIS coordinator pulled the parcel whis. And so we broke it down based on the concerns we heard from the PR. So, um, we broke it down that the parcels less than thirty feet are that pinkish color, or lack of better color terminology. Um, so six hundred and eighteen parcels were thirty feet. And then the white are parcels that are thirty feet to fifty nine feet. One thousand one hundred and twenty seven parcels. So obviously that's the majority of parcels don't meet the current minimum sixty foot width. And then greater than fifty nine feet. So in other words, meeting the current R two setbacks of, or with frontage of sixty feet, four hundred and eighty one parcels. So it's about seventy nine percent of parcels do not meet the minimum sixty feet. And about twenty percent meet the minimum sixty feet. So again, just wanted to provide inform. Find where it would start that setback.
Okay.
That's generally speaking.
Jeff, the, the front yard setback really is kind of the most confusing piece of this because really in the graph that I sent you all, I mean, I, I think it's more accurate to just say, um, existing lot of record in the, um, front yard set, but existing front yard setback measurement. Because really this entire district, so there's R two currently in a couple of different zones. R two zones in a couple of different places in our city. But where it exists right now, which will be the new pedestrian residential district, those homes, so many of them are pre nineteen seventy five zoning code, that the R two front yard setback does not apply at all, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. And so what does apply is, um, this existing lot of record ordinance at two of them, one fifty point eight six and one fifty point eight eight. Can you just walk us through how that math is done? Um, please?
Absolutely. So our current code has a section that's one fifty point eight five is where it starts and it's literally exceptions to the code. So again, we're talking about existing lot of record, not beating, meeting the sixty foot width. You're allowed to have exceptions to that, the reduced setbacks, et cetera, which we use this very regularly for this area we're talking about for obvious reasons. It's not the built environment meeting our current code. So under one fifty point eight eight front yards, we call this the average front yard setback. So if you live on a block that was likely developed before the nineteen seventy five zoning code, nine times out of ten, it's not a twenty, twenty five foot minimum setback there. So we have to send our city surveyor out to actually take the average of that block by doing the distance from the front property line or the center of the road, depending on how they calculate that to the outermost portion of the home. So that could be a staircase, a front porch, the house facade, whatever it may be, could be a garage that's attached that sticks out further. So we take that whole block and we average that. And that's how we get the average front yard setback. So that way it provides some flexibility to someone who clearly doesn't meet today's regulations to be able to add to their house if they would like to. Now, there's another section of that exception that does allow that you can still go ten feet further into the setback if it's an uncovered porch. So we don't have that happen very often, but I just wanted to mention that, that it would be something that could happen.
So you take that average of the block and then you allow someone, whatever that average is, then you would allow someone to build out even further, ten feet further into that setback.
Right.
If it is an uncovered front patio or porch.
And it could go the other way. It could be that this block doesn't have the twenty five foot minimum and maybe it's thirty feet. So whatever they build onto the front would have to meet the thirty foot average front yard setback. So it can go either way.
Yeah, it feels like what it's do, what, what it does, the concerns that I hear a lot from residents who live in this district. Is it something that's gonna, is gonna be built that's like woefully out of step with the rest of the homes on their block? And this existing lot of record math, though.
A pretty significant deviation.
Again, we don't have that data set. I don't have every, every average front yard in the city. That's one of those things where someone comes in and I hope, we have a notebook. This is getting into details here. We have a notebook that if we calculate the average front yard setback in nineteen, you know, eighty nine, we have a folder that it's in. So we open that up first and see if it's already there. If it's not, we send the city surveyor, but we don't have those all calculated in GIS. It's just a piece of paper that we open up and look at.
There's a notebook somewhere.
Correct. There's a notebook. Um, I know Nolan drew most of the PR, so he would have a better idea looking at aerials. But again, it does vary by block. You could drive down West Mary and a lot of those homes are pretty close, could drive down Fairview, those are further back. So again, it's, it varies.
I mean, on Church Street, it's probably about five feet right now.
There, I mean, even on Clay where I live, there are several homes that are within the five feet. It's not unheard of. I don't think it's the norm. Which is why I would take issue with it because we're.
The lot is not the street. To the lot is probably about one foot past the sidewalk.
More property layer.
Yeah.
Well, so it sounds, it sounds like using a five foot front yard setback district wide would certainly make the city's job a bit easier. But is it possible that we just keep the existing lot of record math for front yard setback and nothing changes that way?
Yes, that's possible.
Mm hmm.
You don't seem thrilled.
Well, it's just like it's that it's more complicated, um, you know, to give somebody, oh, it's five foot minimum to ha- give someone a handout in our office. It's much easier to have black or white things, right? What I'm describing tonight is not all black and white. Clearly, we're having a lot of confusion. Um, it takes some, it, it's job security, I suppose for me, but, um, but it's just, there's more certainty in handing someone a handout that says all that. Otherwise, people have to wait and we have to calculate it and get the city surveyor out there and it just takes time. That's all it is, but whatever we need to do, we'll do.
So you're going to be looking for projects after we're done with this.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I have so much free time. I gotta start filling up, so.
Is this, uh, is this something where over time, you know, over the next several year, we could create some sort of database where we know?
I, I really don't think that would be the best use of our time. It's just easier to do as needed.
I mean, because it's new construction or additions to the front of the house. So that's not happening.
Right.
Like every day, you know, I mean, I, it's necessary, but it's not, I mean, it's just not happening all that frequently.
No.
Fair? Yep.
Three, three question. First of all, comment. I think it would be a, a very good exercise for the senior planner position. So, there you go. Uh, as far as my three questions first, uh, if somebody wants to put a, uh, stairs to their porch, the stairs, is that where you measure to the stairs in the front of the house or?
Edge of the stairs. Yes, it's part of the structure.
Mm hmm.
Second question. With the proposed zoning code, do we still have that mechanism? But it, the way it's proposed, the mechanism for average front yard setback. That is something that we could add to, um, maintain the character of, of the neighborhood.
Uh, it's your blank slate. Yes.
And, uh, the third question is, is it, am I right in saying that, uh, for the lot width, I'm going back to the lot width for a moment. For the lot width currently for R two, it's sixty feet minimum. The proposed R two is forty feet. And the, uh, proposed, uh, PR is, uh, thirty feet. Okay. And then part two of that is with the front yard setback. The current is twenty five, subject to the very important asterisk that we just talked about. Uh, the proposed R two is twenty feet. That, um, front yard setback and the PR is five foot. I got that right.
I believe so. I don't have that in front of me.
There, you know it. Okay, thanks.
And I will add, it doesn't just apply to residential, the average front yard setback. It could be commercial, industrial, doesn't have any specific zoning district tied to it.
Okay. Um, do we, I mean, the other big one for me here in the standards in the pedestrian residential district is the lot coverage change from sixty to eighty percent. Um, um, did that strike anyone else? Is there any, are there any specific amendments anyone would like to offer on these standards in the PR district? Are we?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't know how you want to handle this, so I'll just say it all at once.
Okay.
Um, for the lot width, uh, instead of thirty feet for pedestrian residential, make it forty. For the front yard setback, instead of five feet, make it twenty, subject to continuing with the average front yard setback wording. Um, for the side yard, keep that, uh, the same at five. Uh, for the rear yard setback, keep that at twenty. And for the structure height, um, instead of thirty five, make it forty. And the lot coverage instead of eighty percent, make it sixty five. There's a method to my madness. And that is all those changes that I've stated are what is currently proposed for the R two. In other words, it would make all of those the same as R two with the addition of continuing with the, uh, average front yard setback mechanism for maintaining, uh, the character of the community, of the neighborhood.
Okay, well, let's start with, let's just start with the lot width. So you're proposing to change, and we'll need a second on your motion. You're proposing to change the lot width from thirty feet to thirty feet minimum.
Right.
Um, proposed in the new PR district to a forty foot minimum.
Yes, because that's what is currently proposed for R two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, and maybe Nolan can help us out with this. What, what were kind of the, the rationale?
One second, let's just see if there's a second for Bill's motion and then we can have discussion.
Well, I would second, I would second all of Bill's motion.
Okay, so, yeah, just go ahead.
So I guess so we can bring it up and discuss it. Yeah, so second.
Okay, good.
Um, all right. So Nolan, could you go through the rationale as to the, um, reduction of the front yard setback as well as the increase in, um, lot coverage percentage for the PR district and maybe why that was important or why that was chosen? Yeah, yeah. So I'll, I'll start first with the lot width. So the lot width, um, was based on some, uh, just trying to look at what was there. So, um, a lot of what, I, I don't run around in people's front yards with a long tape measure, but what I do do oftentimes is use Google Earth and measure lot widths, um, as best as I can. I can't see the lot lines from aerial imagery. But what I can see is where I think the lot ends. So I, I measure a lot of these lots. I do this, um, when coming up with code standards. Um, because I want to reflect what is there. And what I've found is that a lot of the wa- lots were right around thirty feet. Some of them are forty, some of them are forty five, some, you know, some of them are wider, but some of them are actually even narrower. Um, and so I thought that thirty was a good minimum to keep the. and so I thought that 30 was a good minimum to keep these, a lot of the lots um, conforming. So that was my rationale for using 30 versus 60. I did see that if I had kept 60, it wasn't actually a reflection of most of the structures that were there. When it comes to lot coverage, um, I want to point out, so um, lot coverage, I'm just gonna scroll, make sure that I'm defining this correctly, but I believe on this code, lot coverage is looking at, is including um, the paved surface as well. So um, I think this is section, this is page um, 13. This is part 150.16, page 13. Lot coverage is the percentage of the total lot area that is covered by manmade surfaces such as principal structures, accessory structures over 100 square feet, such as patios, decks and pools, and other surfaces such as driveways, sidewalks, parking lots in areas of gravel, pavers or pavement, but excluding service walks. So the reason that that is high is I wanted to make sure that people have driveways, people have parking pads. And that those are all part of this lot coverage calculation. So a lot of times you'll see lot coverage that includes only structures and doesn't take into consideration the the paved areas.
Nolan, may I interrupt real quick? Heather, is that a change from how we currently calculate lot coverage? I don't know.
I think we kept it very specific. The only thing we really changed was um, small sheds. So 100 square feet or less wouldn't be calculated as part of lot coverage, but over that would be.
Very small.
And right now 160 square foot sheds unless or not counted towards lot coverage.
Okay.
So it's pretty much the same.
But drives all of the rest.
Correct. Any impervious surfaces.
Okay, okay. Sorry to interrupt Nick.
That's interesting.
Oh Penny, I'm so sorry. We have seven more minutes. I'm so sorry. I I'm happy to talk to you before this evening ends. Um.
We've, we've heard a lot of very relevant concerns. One that seems to come up very often is what this is going to do to traffic. And I think when a lot of people say that, what they're talking about is on-street parking. There are also a lot who have said that explicitly. I think it is important to note that when we talk about limiting or further limiting lot coverage, just as Nolan said, what we're talking about is limiting private space for cars, which is going to increase reliance on existing public parking on these very narrow streets, uh, which is a concern for me. Again, I got on-street parking in the street. I have it every house I've lived at in Bowling Green. Uh, there are a lot of people who rely on it. And particularly in some of our denser neighborhoods, if we are forcing more people onto on-street parking, and again, this is all of this is uh, we will be lucky if we see it in my lifetime. So we're talking about changes that are probably going to affect our kids more than anything, but I don't know that I would like to start moving our community in a direction that relies more on on-street parking than it already does. And I think we, that's a concern that we have heard from a lot of people. I didn't, I do not support reducing the lot cover. All of that to say, I do not support reducing lot coverage to 65%.
Okay. If we could stick to width, so we can actually um, get some stuff done in our last couple of minutes here, um, does anyone have any, any more discussion on Bill's motion to change the width in the pedestrian residential district from a 30 foot minimum to a 40 foot minimum?
Sure, I'll go on that one as well.
Okay.
Um, when we purchased our first home right over on North Grove, um, stronger person than me could probably throw a stone and hit it. Um, from here, we had a 42 foot wide lot immediately adjacent to us was a 34 foot wide lot, I believe. That seems to be the norm in a lot of these areas. Uh, we see here that approximately a third of the parcels are already less than the 30 foot minimum that we are, what is it, 28, 29% Bill? I know you know the number. Uh, are already narrower than the 30 foot minimum we've got proposed. And now the motion, I believe, is to increase that to 40 feet. I, I understand the concerns that we've heard, but this seems like one of those areas where when you look at the information, the actual facts, the reality on the ground, it, it just uh, it's already in play. It's already happened. So I, I would also oppose adjusting the lot width to 40.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think we have a, I'm going to state the obvious. I think we have a uh, a di- a different, a difference in perspective in the sense that how do you look at how things are existing? Are we trying to mirror the way things are existing? Or are we trying to uh, project forward knowing that we're not going to necessarily have everything that's existing meet the revised code? And part of that way of looking at things at lens is, do we want it to be the way it is? If, if that's all we're trying to do is say, all right, well, we see this, this is the way it is, we'll make the code so that it fits the way it is. That can usher in uh, additional issues or problems that perhaps weren't the case before. And so if, if we're trying to, option A is mirror what's in existence, we could be opening a can of worms that uh, some people have very, very eloquently stated could occur. Or do we say, all right, that's the way it is. We're not going to change it, obviously. Uh, what is it that we wish to have it be going forward? And so for me, uh, what I've heard is that the, the residents in the currently proposed PR district uh, wanted to be zoned R2 for various reasons. And the R2 that we are proposing has 40 feet. So if we go from 30 feet to 40 feet, uh, what impact will that have? And, and on stuff that's our, uh, lots that are already there, it's not much impact. But we're looking, we're looking toward the future. We're not necessarily trying to mirror what we've got here. We're looking toward the future. So uh, and the, the 40 feet honestly, uh, is a what 20 feet less than the current R2. And I can tell you from experience that I understand what you're saying about parking on the street. There's some residents in, in the bird streets where they have so many kids. They park on the street and they got a lot, very wide lots.
Madam Chair.
Yep, yes.
I, we're not changing anybody. We're not making anybody split their lot. This, all this does is for everybody that's white, it's protecting their home by allowing them to be covered by insurance and rebuild their home in the place that it is. So uh, I'm in favor of recognizing that the lots already exist at 30 feet or less in many cases. And protecting the homes that we can, rather than excluding more homes from coverage or insurance.
Adam Chair, and I guess just for the record, I am in favor of looking forward, replicating the neighborhoods that we see in a lot of these older areas. Like, yes, for me, it is about putting in place the policies that allow these neighborhoods to develop the way they have, and that included flexibility in lot width. As we see here and to what Joel was just saying, if roughly a third of these properties were destroyed by some catastrophic event, those homeowners wouldn't be able to rebuild because of the regulations we are considering right now.
And, and just to clarify, when, when Joel said uh, protecting people that are white, he meant uh, the, the area on the map.
Save that Clay.
Thanks. Greg, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, so uh, hearing no more discussion, Jody, can you call the roll? So we're, we are voting on Bill's motion to um, increase the minimum lot width in the proposed pedestrian residential district from 30, a 30 foot minimum to a 40 foot minimum.
Odericio?
No.
Ips?
Yes.
Robinet?
Yes.
Robando?
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Harold?
Yes.
Alumbo?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Um, why don't we talk front yard um, setback and then we can wrap.
Madam. Here, uh, what I had said earlier, I'll reiterate since we're taking the piece at a time, which I think is a good idea. For the front yard, you said front yard setback, correct?
Yes.
For the front yard.
Because that was your second piece, correct?
Uh, yeah, I went through every line. Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're right. Um, the uh, current front yard setbacks, 25 feet minimum, subject to the uh, average set, your front yard setback that uh, uh, Heather spoke about.
Let's call that the existing lot of record math. Which is really what it is. I mean, I really think that I should not have tabled this the way that I did. Because the reality is that there are so few, or no, Heather, I'm looking at you. Can you come back up to the microphone? I mean, are there any lots in this proposed district that do not have more than 50% of their side of the street developed pre-code such that they would even have a 25 foot minimum? There was, there's always, in this proposed district, the math in the front yard setback is always, has been for the past 60 years, the existing lot of record math.
Yes.
75 hour, yep, right, okay.
Right.
So my, my motion was, uh, is, I think it was, uh, okay, the current is 25 foot with the existing lot of record map taking.
It's just the existing lot of record math.
We'll call it E L R.
Oh no, I'm not going to remember that. Thank you.
So anyway, right now it's 25 feet minimum, subject to the average front yard setback. And uh, the proposed R2 is 20 foot, not including that uh, mechanism.
The new R2 is 20 foot minimum.
Correct. And uh, the PR is five foot. But what I would, my, my motion was that it be 20 foot, but it also include the uh, the uh,
Existing lot of record.
Yeah, if, if, what you mean by that is the average front yard setback, yes. And I would also, at some point, if that, if that passes, I would propose it.
Let's take one thing.
Is there a second on Bill's motion?
Was already.
Oh, was there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sure. Okay, discussion. Thank you. I'm not comfortable with that new minimum number. If you're going to have, if you're changing the 25 foot minimum to a 20 foot minimum, because the, we have not been using a 25 foot minimum since this code has been in place. It's always been the existing lot of record math. Then I, I think what you do is if you want to keep the existing lot of record math, you just say existing lot of record math, and that's what we use going forward. But I do very much appreciate that there is a lot to say uh, for clarity and a simple spreadsheet and something that does not require people going out to survey every time someone wants to put an addition on the front of their home or change a porch, et cetera. But I think that that probably happens so infrequently. Um, and and the existing ladder, I, so I'll stop. What does everyone else think?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would, uh, I would amend Bill's and make it strictly the, the 20 foot front yard setback and no average front yard setback. I mean, I, I understand how that's been important, but I, I also recognize the importance of just having a set number. Um, and if they want, I got, I mean, you know, if someone really wanted to say, hey, the average in mine is, is 10, and I want to apply for a, a variance, I mean, they technically could do that, correct?
No, if you eliminate the average, if you eliminate the existing lot of record, they would not be able to sit, they would not be able to reference that average.
Well, couldn't anyone apply for?
Well, so it's an, it's a numerical part of the code. They would be seeking a variance from the zoning board of appeals and the argument they would be making would be on they, if they could pull the existing lot of record from our old code presumably, um.
Am I the only one that thinks it is going to look equally odd to have a 20 foot setback in a neighborhood where the average is seven to 10? That to me is going to be equally unattractive.
Well, and there are some areas where houses sit back further than 20 feet. So I like the, the whole existing lot of record thing. Because it keeps all development on a block uniform with what's already on the block.
It would be keeping the status quo. That is what we've been doing. The front yard setback would not change. It would be the same front yard setback in this neighborhood that we have had since our zoning code went into effect. We just said existing lot of record.
And Madam Chair, what if we have a, a new area zoned R2 that doesn't have any?
Zoned PR district?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a question. Yeah.
So if, if, if we had both, I guess that.
A numerical, that's a reason for a numerical minimum.
Yeah, if we can't calculate it because we have no data, um, it gives something to work from.
Heather, I ask how many vacant lots we have in the PR district? How many, how impactful is this decision going to be?
Sure. Um, well, I'm looking at aerial views such as what I gave you tonight. And being a little bit liberal, if someone's garage might be over the property line, you can't tell with aerials, there's probably about 30.
Out of the 2,200, 2,300 parcels here.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
That is less.
Yeah. Strikes me as not very much opportunity for infill. Is that how that number strikes you, Jeff?
I, I would agree with that, but I mean, like, you know, how many properties are owned by someone who, knowing that they could knock their house down and you know, put in a duplex? I mean, like, I just, I, I understand what you're saying, but I feel like that's kind of wide speculation. There's so many rental properties right now, old homes that could easily be knocked down and built into something different.
I, I think we need to be very careful entertaining the hypothetical that they're going to be bulldozers, bulldozing every block. There are, there are costs associated with bulldozing a home. And if you are purchasing the home, again, I close real estate every day. There are costs associated with purchasing a home and bulldozing a home and rebuilding a new home, and it very quickly does not make sense financially to do that, particularly if you're talking wide scale, you know, citywide. This is not, it's something to be monitored, certainly, and we can always tweak the zone zoning if we need to later on, if we see people pulling permits left and right to bulldoze homes, but I, I do think we need to be very careful. We, we just need to be realistic about our expectations when it comes to bulldozing buildings left and right. I understand the concern, but it, we, we should temper that.
I called a question.
Uh, may I ask Heather a question first? I, I started to say that.
Yep.
Um, Heather, right now, the current R2, uh, according to what Rachel put together is 25 feet minimum double aster. So right now, it's 25 feet with the uh, existing lot of record map and the average setback.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so.
Potentially those lots are buildable now. We've had that happen. Very few, but there's a tract of house on car that was just built. That was on one of those vacant lots.
Okay, thank you. So, so all I'm saying with the, with what the motion is, is uh, what we currently have, only instead of 25 feet, it's 20 feet.
Okay, so the motion is to change the front yard setback uh, in the pedestrian residential district from a five foot minimum to a 20 foot minimum um, with the existing lot of record math that currently exists in our code. Does that make sense to everyone? Does that, I don't know how to say it more concisely, but do you understand?
One.
One motion.
Now there, and, and Nick did have an amendment.
An amendment, but why do you cancel this motion? And then if Nick wants to.
I'll drop it.
We'll allow him. Okay. So Jody, would you please call the roll?
Ips?
Yes.
Robinet?
Yes.
Robando?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Alumbo?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes. All right, we did not get through um, as much as we had hoped, but we will just tag on another working session to our um, council meeting on 12/19, okay? This concludes the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep going back till we get it done, right?
You know, I don't know if we can go on and we're just going to outlaw the entire pedestrian residential zone. It could be a parkland maybe. Are you trying to build a golf course in the pedestrian residential zone at these setbacks, Bill? Are you trying to build a golf course in the pedestrian residential zone at these setbacks, Phil?
Oh.
Yeah, we could.
Fun stuff. Yeah, uh, thank you.
The handout on the motion. Rather than printing three separate images.
Hi Penny, I'm sorry.